Good afternoon. This is John Steen. I want to call to order the special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, January 22, 2021. Ms. Shelman, if you're on, would you please confirm the quorum?
I'm going to mark you as President, Dr. Mackey.
President.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly, was that you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez. And Ms. Neimler.
Here.
Chair Steen, we do have a quorum. I believe that Ms. Gonzalez was on, but she may not have heard me when I called, but I will mark her present so we know for sure. We do have a quorum.
All right.
Yes, President.
And by the way, Ms. Shelman, you're hard to hear. I don't know if you can adjust that in some way.
I'll try to speak out.
Let me go ahead and cue Ivan.
Is that better?
A little bit better. Ivan, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chair Steen, and good afternoon. My name is Ivan. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their January 22 special board meeting by teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. If you've pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad to be put in the queue to speak. Again, please press zero now. A member of our staff will take your name, and when you hear Chair Steen say your name, your line will be open and you will have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. For all others who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. I'll now turn the call back over to Chair Steen.
Thank you, Ivan. Let's move to Agenda Item 2, which is our safety message. Mayor, are you ready to speak to us?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chairman, and I'll be brief. As everyone knows, we've shifted gears now and have begun a pretty extensive vaccination operation, which hopefully to everyone signals that we are reaching the beginning of the end of the pandemic, although it's going to be some time until we get everyone vaccinated. We are currently working with the state and somewhat with the federal government for coordination of supplies, but also are somewhat at the mercy of the state with regard to the rules of how those supplies can be administered. So right now, we're vaccinating groups 1A and 1B per the state's orders, and that's happening at four different mass vaccination sites, Wonderland Mall, the Alamo Dome, as well as two sites that are reserved for phone-in appointments only at WellMed on the west side and the south side. Unfortunately, we have exponentially much more demand and eligible population than we do have vaccines, so we're asking for everyone's patience. There's about 1,000 different ways that cities across the country are using to register folks and schedule appointments. What we're doing has been recommended by all the folks that are using different methods as the most sane one in terms of getting this out. Unfortunately, it is very frustrating because there's simply not enough vaccine to go around. So hopefully, over the next several weeks, we're going to see increasing supplies, but in the meantime, please get your vaccination if you are eligible and able to make an appointment. And if you haven't yet, please be patient. We will get those out as quickly as possible. In terms of the infection and pandemic itself, we're still in an extraordinarily dangerous period of time. Our positivity rate remains above 15%, although it's starting to edge down, which is a good sign. The hospitals are filled to the brim, and we're starting to see the lagging indicators now in terms of deaths and mortality that are associated with the high number of cases, and where our seven-day average is now still over 2,000 people per day getting infected. I will say, however, over the last few days, we are starting to see numbers slow down a bit in the hospitals. So by the end of next week, we should be able to determine whether or not we're at a peak or not. If we are, that will mean that we've got a good three to four weeks of just really high numbers and dangerous transmission happening. So our message remains the same: continue to protect yourself, wear masks, physical distance, proper hygiene, and if you are vulnerable to severe illness, stay home as much as possible. So last thing I'll say is that we are now working through the COVID relief funds that are being made available by the federal government. There is more relief on the way, a second round of PPP. We're going to be helping administer to small businesses. And we've also been able to refill our emergency housing assistance funds through the COVID Relief Act as well. So we are poised for recovery, and based on my conversations with peers across the country, San Antonio is on as strong a foundation for recovery as any across the nation. And so I'm very excited that the clouds will break in 2021, and we're going to have a good year when we finally call it a year at the end of this one. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you all for doing your part to stay safe.
Mayor, on behalf of the board and really all of us at CPS Energy, again, want to compliment you on your outstanding leadership throughout this pandemic. Let's move to Paula Gold Williams on our safety message.
All right. Thank you so much, and thanks for the opportunity to address the board today. I always want to express appreciation for the mayor and for Judge Wolf of Bear County. Again, the updates and the focus is a beacon that we utilize to watch what's going on, and we watch the statistical information as well and compare it to ours. So all of that just helps us align our messages and get the right messages to our employees. The bits that I could add for CPS Energy in particular, I think we have a lot of parallels to the broader information that the mayor has shared. I will tell you, our running total of positive cases is 372 today, and our current staffed team of employees is at 298. Probably the challenge that we really have is we are now at a point where almost 10% of our workforce is reaching these higher quarantine numbers. This is a significant concern to us. We do have hospitalizations in check. We have two people in the hospital that we believe will make recovery, but the challenge around quarantines definitely slows down the business and makes it more difficult. We are closely monitoring the activities that we may have to do in terms of still sequestering employees, although we do have a mandate. And what that means is we may take small groups of employees and ask them to work onsite for a couple of weeks at a time so we can maintain operations. We did extensive work last year to develop a broad framework and plan if that has to be activated, and we're closely watching that and feel like there wouldn't be much for us to get prepared to do that. Our challenges relative to the vaccination that the mayor has mentioned, while we are essential and we are critical to the first responder component all the way from the federal and the state levels, utility workers are much farther down in the list. Accordingly, we can't have a program that makes sure that a significant amount of our employees get the vaccine. What we are doing is continuing to educate our employees. Those who are in categories relative to their age or their health condition, we are definitely encouraging them to take actions to make sure that individually they're on the pathway to get vaccinated. We do see, though, as the mayor indicated, that the strain on supply is also a challenge. So we continue to, again, try to remind our employees to be diligent, to continue to physically distance, to be very careful in their activities, both at work and away from work. And we're just going to be as focused on this as absolutely need be. So thank you so much to the Board of Trustees and to our stakeholders who are here today. Thank you so much for letting me provide that report.
Thank you, Ms. Paula Gold Williams. I know you've been extremely challenged as a CEO throughout this pandemic, and you're doing a superb job. We can't tell you how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let's move to Agenda Item 3, which is the invocation. Ms. Dana Myers.
Please to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations to our community. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Very well done. Let's move to the next Agenda item, which is public comment. And this is where we provide an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted Agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we've done for in-person board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered so we may hear their comments. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted Agenda for this meeting. For this meeting, we have 11 registered speakers, who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, letting them know that they should wrap up their comments. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the Agenda item number they're going to speak about. Our first speaker is Richard Pettis, followed by Dr. Meredith McGuire. Mr. Pettis.
Chairman Steen and honorable members of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, my name is Richard Pettis, and I am the CEO of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, a small, nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization headquartered here in San Antonio. I wanted to comment on the Rate Advisory Committee. I wanted to say that it's important, and I think of the utmost importance, that the Rate Advisory Committee remain a special-purpose advisory group to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees and staff, and must always remain purely advisory in nature. I believe that the membership of the Rate Advisory Committee should also reflect a balanced representation of the greater San Antonio area and region, the surrounding region, and ensure that there are representatives from the business community and business groups like the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, important business and industry sectors such as small business, manufacturing sector, land developers, real estate interests, civil engineers, bankers, planners, economic development practitioners, academics, as well as members of the robust environmental community that we have here in San Antonio. I think this is the right step forward, and the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce and the San Antonio business community is supportive in the actions that you all will take as we move forward to form this important committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Our next speaker is Dr. Meredith McGuire, followed by Scott Kanski. Dr. McGuire.
Chair Steen, it appears Ms. McGuire is not on the line.
All right. Then our next speaker will be Scott Kanski, followed by Isabella Prisceno.
Good afternoon, Board and Mayor. My name is Scott Kanski. I'm a San Antonio resident and organizer with Texas Rising. This will be my first time addressing you all with public comment, because every time there's been an opportunity to do so, there has been a seemingly purposely difficult process. On top of the fact that there is a different system for comment than city council, which uses the WebEx platform, I fail to see the reason that this meeting is taking place during the middle of the day when many CPS ratepayers are at work so they can afford to pay you to sit here and not listen to what we repeatedly ask for. Transparency in your processes and the establishment of a Rate Advisory Committee that is empowered to represent what actual San Antonians need. To be honest with you all, I don't know much about the Rate Advisory Committee other than it's supposed to be a way for CPS to take public input and enact real change. The key phrase here is "supposed to." I say this because the lack of transparency that we have seen from CPS over even just the past few months does not inspire much confidence that you will actually even keep your promise and make sure that the Rate Advisory Committee uses its time to evaluate how a long-term commitment to coal will, without a doubt, harm public health and marginalize working-class communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kanski. Our next speaker will be Isabella Prisceno, followed by Karen Munoz.
Good afternoon, Board and Mayor. I'm Isabella Prisceno, a San Antonio resident and an organizer with Texas Rising. It's a miracle that I'm here speaking to you today. I happen to have free time between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. today. If I had an in-person office job, school, or other responsibilities in only one hour of one day, I wouldn't be able to speak my mind at a rare meeting for what's supposed to be a public utility. To truly embody claims made last Thursday during Steen's reappointment hearing that CPS is working on transparency and public involvement, why not follow city council recommendations and examples by moving meetings to a different platform and having a more flexible signup process? By not doing this here further proving that this board is all talk and not serious about public participation in a public utility. Every time I speak to you or about you, I cannot run into the ground enough to point that this is meant to be public. I feel like I say that phrase a lot. If this were truly a public utility, though, we would not only have a better signup process to speak, but the Rate Advisory Committee would also be run differently. It would not be compromised in an uneven way that leaves out the public and would consider public needs for clean air and water, especially in a city with a ridiculously high asthma rate. This Rate Advisory Committee needs to work around the context of resource generation and consider the very real and negative impacts of coal power and how it impacts the public. Public not meaning businesses or bondholders. It means the public made up of working people and their families. Consider that who you just see as ratepayers are also real people with lungs and other circumstances that impact their lives besides making sure your CEO can get her hefty salary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prisceno. Our next speaker is Karen Munoz, followed by Rachel Rabini. Ms. Munoz.
Hi, my name is Karen Munoz. I'm a second-year law student at St. Mary's University. I'm calling as a representative of the People's Parity Project, St. Mary's Law Chapter. Our organization is committed to underwriting the law and making it work for working-class people as opposed to just corporate interests as it currently does. To that end, we were particularly disturbed by CPS's anti-democratic move ensuing to block a ballot referendum. But that's not why I'm calling to speak today. I'm actually calling because the Rate Advisory Committee should include public input in a true way. Because this committee is tasked with assessing customer impact and rate structures, input on resource generation must be included in the Rate Advisory Committee's scope of responsibility. Continuing to prioritize coal as our main source of energy generation prevents efficiency goals and setting progressive rate structures that will support a just transition by 2030. We demand that this committee is a committee that uses its time to evaluate how a long-term commitment to coal will harm public health and marginalize working-class communities of color. There's absolutely no way for us to do that if we only let people that are business interests into the room. To that end, as Scott and Isabella both commented before me, this meeting happening in the middle of the day and the fact that I had to call in at 10:00 a.m. in between my classes to be able to sit here and then listen to a phone call, not a WebEx meeting like city council uses, to do this, there's absolutely no way for us to make our voice heard in a meaningful way. And anybody who has less privilege than I do has even less access to that. So I just ask and demand that you take this into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Our next speaker is Rachel Rabini, followed by DeeDee Belmaras.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time to speak. I'm here as a San Antonio resident commenting on the RAC. I'm not sure how the board expects us, as other people have mentioned, some people who want to participate in the process to sign up. And to make a personal phone call within a short window, I can tell you, as a former teacher, there's just no way I would have ever been able to stop my class. To do this is unfair. It's inadequate. And while I would normally request that it be changed, I think the one-hour window is so insulting that I'm demanding that it's changed immediately to a minimum of a three-day window. Additionally, I think holding these on the weekend would be a great idea, and it would allow more people to participate in the process of a company chanting "People First." And that's really what I came here to say, was my main point. But as I've been learning about the RAC, the newly established RAC, I came across a very telling comment made by Ed Telly, who referred to the RAC as a, quote, "Trojan horse" for Texas wanting clean air and water. I'm originally from the Houston area, and I can tell you that I have many dear friends that work in the oil, gas, energy industry that share the same concerns as the people that have labeled the enemy. We are energy employees. We are community members. We are Texans. And Ed, if these are the people in your Trojan horse, then something is seriously wrong with the way that you're thinking and the way that you're living your life. And to you, I say, if the task at hand is too much for you, then step aside and let someone with a vision and the bold leadership take the keys to step in. And that applies to everyone on this call. We do not need more of this old, tired, detached-from-reality way of thinking that got us the coal plant. My God, a coal plant! When coal was absolutely no future, and we all knew it. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Rabini. Our next speaker is DeeDee Belmaras, followed by Anakwa Garcia. Ms. Belmaras.
Good afternoon. This is DeeDee Belmaras with Public Citizen. In looking over trustee Gonzalez's letter to city council regarding the Rate Advisory Committee, I hope that the board and management will ensure that this committee will not only provide customers the opportunity to weigh in on utility rate concerns, current and future rate structure, and customer impact, but will also make recommendations for generation resource planning. This was not included in trustee Gonzalez's letter. It's critical that committee members and ratepayers have access to the economic data that CPS Energy has consistently withheld from the public so they can see what is already known. Continuing to run the Spruce Coal Plant is not only polluting our air and affecting the health of our community, but it's also costing ratepayers too much money. I also ask that CPS Energy management and board work to ensure that the 11 committee members that you all appoint are from a diverse group that represents a broad customer base rather than they be only members from the business community. Every customer, especially working-class families, deserves to have their input considered in all utility decisions that affect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belmaras. Our next speaker will be Anakwa Garcia, followed by Lexi Garcia.
Hello, my name is Anakwa Garcia. My pronouns are she/her, ea, miss, and ma'am. And I am representing Southwest Workers Union and our members, and I am also a ratepayer. I want to share that our membership is asking for better accessibility and transparency from CPS Energy. It has to be said, like it has before, that a one-hour registration window paired with a 1:00 p.m. meeting time on a weekday is not accessible for working families. Moving meetings to a more accessible time and to a more transparent platform would benefit all San Antonio residents. 14,000 San Antonio voters have demanded CPS shut down Spruce. Science proves that coal kills. Therefore, CPS Energy's unwavering commitment to coal means that CPS Energy also kills. When we factor in the effects of coal and how it disproportionately affects blacks, indigenous, people of color, we can conclude that CPS Energy is actively engaging in environmental racism. We have already declared racism a public health crisis in our city. I want to bring those 14,000 voices into the fold as we discuss the Rate Advisory Committee. We are demanding that the Rate Advisory Committee uses information to evaluate how long-term commitment to coal will harm public health. Southwest Workers Union asks, "Does CPS Energy believe that environmental racism is a public health crisis in our city? And does CPS Energy care about residential ratepayers?" Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lexi Garcia, followed by Mason Eskamia.
Hello, CPS board members. My name is Lexi Garcia. I'm an organizer with Texas Rising, working to build the power of young people through student organizing and in our community with chapters at colleges across the state. For the last six months, youth DHLHSA chapter organized alongside the Recall CPS campaign, trying to reclaim our public utility and democratize this space, that the profit-driven board and CEO have taken every measure to keep close. You serve a city that is constructed on racial and economic segregation, and you perpetuate that injustice by making working-class and communities of color bear the cost for subsidized rates for the largest users, the big businesses in this town. Not only through financial costs and the cruel consequences of disconnecting those who can't pay, but also through the air that San Antonians breathe and the extraction and pollution the Spruce Coal Plant puts out that you are committed to preserving. CPS is not serving the majority of people in San Antonio, and the Spruce Coal Plant has an disposition to continue to lose millions of dollars. In discussions of the Rate Advisory Committee, this fact cannot be overlooked, and we demand that resource generation be a focus of the RAC because you can't talk about customer impact without talking about customer health and the collective position of environmental crisis that we all find ourselves in and that, depending on coal, has put us in. Lastly, I echo all of the calls about accessibility. These meetings are entirely inaccessible for those we need to hear from the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Free comments. Our next speaker is Mason Eskamia, followed by our final speaker, Greg Harmon.
Hello, my name is Mason Eskamia. I'm a longtime San Antonio resident. And today, I'm going to be talking about the Rate Advisory Committee and its accessibility and transparency. Because this committee is tasked with assessing customer impact and rate structures, input on resource generation, health impact, and how it impacts our communities are a must for RAC scope and accessibility. CPS and the Rate Advisory Committees continuing to prioritize coal as our main source of energy generation prevents efficiency goals and setting progressive rate structures that will support a just transition by 2030. We have already said before, and I'm going to recant what many have said before me, is that these models, the use of coal, and these kind of meetings are inaccessible to many of the people that it affects. Almost 80% of the people that live next to the Spruce Coal Plant are people of color. 23% of them are hit by poverty, and yet nothing will be done, and they are not capable of making it to a meeting at 1:00 p.m. and when there's only one hour of time to sign up for it. It's completely inaccessible for people who work 40 or 40-plus hours of work a week. It's completely inaccessible to those who are single families and those who are hit by poverty. These kind of meetings and this Rate Advisory Committee must take more responsibility in helping the harm that it may commit to customers, as that is part of the customer impact. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Eskamia. The last speaker is Mr. Greg Harmon.
This is Greg Harmon. He's here at the RAC. Obviously, the mission, the appointments made, how the expectations are expressed to those members, and the execution and management of the process are all critical aspects of this work. And while we expect and will demand that our city council bring progressive community voices to the table, this appointment process is an opportunity for this board to start working to restore relationship with the community by first moving first to select members who actually represent community and not just the highest-energy users who continue to profit at the expense of working families. This should include Recall CPS members specifically as a restorative work and begin that long and arduous journey, especially considering the utility's recent legal reach-around to undermine democratic process and the right to petition or government. The RAC, you've heard a lot about that, I hope. The RAC has been lobbied for by the community since at least 2018. It's good to see it coming into form. And while climate action, as they say, language and recommendations of a year ago were included in some of that, we haven't seen all of our recommendations adopted. And so I want to include a couple more here, in addition to what's been supplied in the past, specifically that all members receive equity and anti-racism training, that members be allowed proxy votes to avoid lack of quorum, open meetings are all be followed, and no non-disclosure agreements used. The committee is getting useful information to avoid the so-called competitive information issue that's been used to deny the community information in the past, and that the members understand the purpose of this, this decarbonization, and that we get to half reductions by 2030 and not the 43% that we've already committed to as a city. Actively encouraging community voices to come to the table as well. And I agree with the running of these meetings needs to be on an empowered video platform that we can see what you all are seeing. It would allow community engagement and participation. Thanks so much to everybody who's been on and the speakers that have been before me. It's been really powerful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. That concludes our public comment. Let's move-
Chair Steen?
Yes.
We do have Dr. Meredith McGuire who's been able to join.
Yes, doctor, go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, doctor, we had you, we called you earlier, but we're glad you were able to make it. Go ahead, please.
Well, I was here, I, they didn't have me unmuted. So, thank you very much for this opportunity. I really applaud your decision to move forward with the advisory committee on the rate structure for CPS Energy. I urge you to require CPS Energy to provide its board of trustees and rate advisory committee all the data and truthful representation of its meaning that will be needed for a truly fair and forward-looking rate structure. The current rate structure is backward-looking, preventing many of the best practices for managing the future of the electricity grid. There is something very ominous about CPS's presentation to this board last fall when several PowerPoint slides were used to make you believe that the residential rate payers aren't contributing enough revenue. Why would a public utility misrepresent the impacts of its rate to its own board of trustees? Was it to prevent the rate advisory committee from setting fair rates? Was it to hide evidence that some customers may be paying accessibly low rates? I'm very concerned. I put together a slide presentation, I shouldn't say a slide presentation, but I put together a presentation that I'll send to you. I'll just give a couple of examples right now. One of the slide captions reads, "Residential customers make up nearly ninety percent of our customers but contribute less than fifty percent of all revenue." Well, duh, many commercial industrial customers use more than a million kilowatts each month while residential customers average around one thousand kilowatts a month. Another slide reads, "On average, businesses pay much higher monthly bills, ten times more than residential customers." Well, of course they do because they use so much more electricity. The rate advisory committee needs to consider whether CPS's volumetric rates for those businesses are too low and this board needs to get a truthful evidence about the rates, too. Please do something about that to make sure that the rate committee and the board gets really truthful evidence and all made transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. That concludes our public comment. And let's move to agenda item five. And this is generally a rate advisory committee RAC planning session. And so for opening remarks, we go to trustee Jenny Gonzalez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you trustee, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everyone, good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank the mayor, our CEO, Paulico Williams, and my fellow board members for the opportunity to lead the rate advisory committee, to be the liaison. We started the new year with a renewed spirit and vigor to support our mayor, our city council, and the communities we serve to accomplish the design, development, and implementation of RAC. As you know, CPS strives to be financially responsible and a strong steward of the community assets while effectively balancing its values, pillars of security, safety, reliability, resilience, customer vulnerability, and environmental impact. The mission of RAC is as follows, to provide and ensure public participation to receive balanced and objective information from the rate advisory board members on CPS utility efforts and projects related to rate structure, rate design, and generation planning, to collectively achieve a framework that meets the needs of a diverse community. In closing my opening remarks, I would like to thank CPS Energy Energy Leadership, Caroline, Rudy, Melissa, Danae, and Loretta in supporting me and our board with this effort. We are pleased with the progress we've made so far. Yes, there's always room for improvement, but we are pleased with the process. You have commitment, you have my commitment to be responsive and agile in leading this effort to achieve collective, measurable, and impactful results. Thank you. On that next item, I would like to go ahead and turn this over to Rudy Garza, who is the director of corporate communications, so he can provide an update of everything we've done thus far.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Steen, members of the board. I'm really excited to be here to provide an update on the extensive work we've done to carry out the board's direction on moving towards opening up the application process to get us to the opportunity for you to make appointments. I'm pleased to report, number one, I want to thank trustee Gonzalez for all the time that she has spent with the members of the staff to review documents and to provide input into our application process and generally point us in the right direction on getting appointments made and getting going on the rate advisory committee. Staff has spent a lot of time working on the application. A sample of the application was in your board packets, so I encourage you to review that information at your convenience and any thoughts or feedback that you have to us, please get those to today and we will be happy to continue working to make sure that application is as sound and robust as you would like for it to be. We are working on, once we get some further direction from you today, our next step is we have a press release that is really meant to celebrate the beginning of the RAC process and solicit interest from members of the public to make their application. We're trying to make it as easy as we possibly can. There will be a website dedicated to the RAC on the CPSenergy.com website. The application will be found there. We are working on turning a PDF copy of our application into an electronic form, much like the city of San Antonio has. You get on the city of San Antonio website and you can fill out the form electronically from your computer or your iPhone and hit submit and you're done. That is what we are going for here at CPS Energy for those who may not have a computer. There will be hard copies available. All of the district council members will have access to a hard copy for their own constituents. We will have hard copies at all of the four walk-in centers of CPS Energy for our customers. Some of our customers go to pay their bills. We will also put hard copies available at the city clerk's office because really our intention is to cast as wide a net as possible to ensure that our customers have access to our process. In addition, we have set up an email address that any questions or comments can go to. It's RAC, it stands for rate advisory committee, but it's RAC@CPSenergy.com. And that is the easiest way to communicate with members of staff that are working on this process to get quick feedback and we will be monitoring that email inbox 24 hours a day and will be quick about getting back to any customers who are interested. As I said, we have, we've been keeping trustee Gonzalez apprised of where we are. Our goal is we will, after this meeting, we will send out the press release. We will make our website live where the application can be found so our customers can start applying. Customers can also, who reside within district boundaries of our city council members, can apply directly to their city council member for appointment through that process. We will leave the process open for a 30-day period. So, the end of February, we will accept applications through February 27th, I believe, and then we will begin the process of laying out the diverse responses that we get back so that we can, you know, we can work through trustee Gonzalez to get in a form that is acceptable and helpful more than anything to the board. So, we anticipate the board being able to take a look at this information, you know, once we close the process between the beginning of March and, if necessary, into April so that we can get the appointments made within a reasonable timeframe. And our goal is to have our first seated RAC, rate advisory committee meeting in the May timeframe. So, trustee Gonzalez, that is my update in terms of a status report and I will turn it back over to you with, do you have any questions or closing commentary on that agenda item?
I don't, actually, I'm actually going to open it up to my fellow trustees and our mayor to see if they have any questions or comments in the report that you provided.
Sure, trustee Gonzalez, I have a couple of questions. This is-
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, thank you, trustee Gonzalez, for leading this effort. And also thank you to my colleagues on the board here for endeavoring to get this done. Obviously, a lot of interest and we've gotten a lot of comments and input. I'm a little confused in terms of the application process from the city council. I just want to make sure that I'm setting the proper expectations for us here, but also for the council. And the way I understand it is the council will be responsible for fielding a candidate to represent their district and would forward that to CPS. And that CPS, our board will then work through applications to ensure there's no duplicates when we put forward our names as trustees. Is that right?
Mayor, remember, that is absolutely right. The names that come to us from the council members' offices, we're going to ask those interested from that perspective to fill out the application process. And so we will forward the full list to the board for consideration that will include applicants who came through the council members' offices and then those that came directly to CPS Energy. So, you will see both lists, you know, when you're making your appointments. Yes, sir.
So, that way if a trustee nominates the same person that is coming from a district, we can make that adjustment over here as trustees?
Yes. So, I actually was going to go into reiterate and be more specific about the overall process, but I don't want to do overlapping and, but I'll go ahead and just reiterate, but there will be a collective effort as mentioned. As you know, there's been a lot of activities that were outlined. And of course, just like we're going to, we're asking city council members, we will also ask each board member to recommend individuals. Until the online capability is available, as Rudy mentioned, any name received by city council, for example, we will forward a hard copy application for that individual. We will, they will be reviewed, embedded, and make sure that they've been completed correctly. Seven important key factors that I would like to stress is that we will, we have a matrix that we've designed to ensure that we know clearly where the, if that individual's from what district, what quadrant, skill set, background, location, even, you know, demographic salary, and then also if it might be an issue, they don't have consistent internet access. And so the application is designed to be inclusive and to get as much information as possible to ensure, again, that there is diverse representation and to ensure that, you know, we help the individual, again, complete the applications correctly, that there is a formal vetting process, and all information will be presented to everyone involved in designing RAC.
Okay, got it. So, in terms of fielding applicants then, from the council, you're working directly with the council offices or with the city clerk on that?
We're doing both, I believe.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We have this communication. To answer your question, mayor, we have several layers of communication to ensure that the process is inclusive and clear and working with city council. And then, of course, the other process of working with the city clerk. And Rudy, is there any additional information you would like to add?
No, ma'am, you hit the nail on the head. John Leal in our local government office is working directly with council offices and he will be keeping tabs of any applications that come directly to the city clerk and we will make sure we don't miss any opportunity for a potential applicant.
Okay. I don't want to get ahead of you, but I do have questions and interest on the trustee, like how many nominees we can put forward as trustees, how we're going to engage the board here during that process, that sort of thing. If that's next, I'll hold off on my questions.
Yeah, that will be next. Mayor, we will make sure we go over that information as well. And if you don't mind, I would like to see if any of our fellow trustees have any questions. Mr. Steen, do you have any questions? Trustee?
No, I don't.
Dr. Mackey, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Kelly, do you have any questions? Mr. Kelly? Trustee Kelly?
No questions.
Okay, and again, the mayor has additional questions. And so I can, I'm just going to go ahead and in this high-level review the process. As Rudy explained, we've received some names already through the activities we have outlined, primarily reaching out to city council. We are also asking that each board member to recommend two or three people to apply. Again, until the online capability is available, when a name is received, our team will forward an application to the individual. Once they are reviewed, to ensure they were completely filled out, they will, again, be part of a vetting process, they have the formal process, and they'll be sorted out by criteria such as district, if they're located in a trustee's quadrant, skill set, background, locations, etc. The outreach efforts are to be, our outreach efforts, and I want to stress this again, are to ensure a balanced, diverse, and equitable RAC list of committee members that are representative of the cross-section of our service area. The CPS staff will continue to reach out to interested customers through several channels, offline and online. A specific example of offline channels would be newspaper or mailer, received at home. Online would be, a specific example would be our virtual People First Community Fairs. And as Rudy mentioned, the application fair will be open through February 26th, extended if there is a need to extend it. And so, again, I want to reemphasize that we are working really diligently, again, to make sure that this is an exclusive process and we will be working hand-in-hand with the mayor's office. And so, again, I want to thank everybody on everybody's effort and know that there's always room for improvement and we're open to that, any feedback, at any time. I think that's what I would like to, I think that's all I have to say on that. And then, if necessary, I believe, a special board meeting can be added, an additional special board meeting could be added to review the list of applicants and the selection of the eleven members to represent the board of trustees and I believe the ten members nominated to represent the city council. And then, of course, to select a chair and a vice chair. I believe that that is the description of the body of RAC. Rudy, do you want to go into more specifics about that?
Trustee Gonzalez, I think you covered it all. I think our goal is to take the direction from the board on how you'd like us to present the information to you. I think generally, we will have a nice matrix that will lay out what each potential applicant brings to the table and to ensure we get a diverse cross-section of the community represented on the rate advisory committee, but we will work hand-in-hand with you to make sure we get that as right as possible. So, right now, we are focused on generating applicants. We've got a very robust communication plan. We will be taking out ads in the paper and we will be doing the things that we do normally through our corporate communications efforts to beat the bushes for applicants. And so, we're highly focused on that while the board continues to deliberate how they will select applicants and move to solidify this committee. how they will select applicants and move to solidify this committee.
Yes, and I think let's just be clear again for those who are listening and then just for board members and I believe just for a mayor, to ensure, what does the board make up again? The members, Rudy, can you go over that again?
Yes, ma'am. So the way the board voted to create the REC, we've got 10 members representing each of the council districts with the city of San Antonio. We've got 11 members that will be appointed by our board of trustees. If you look at the membership criteria that we're looking for, we are looking to choose members, obviously from the San Antonio city council districts that live within the CPS Energy service area. We're looking for members outside of the city of San Antonio city limits to represent our suburban cities and our unincorporated Bear County parts of our service territory. We want every rate class within CPS Energy represented. We'd love to have neighborhood associations represented. We'd love to have multifamily residential customers represented, major manufacturers, large and small business, medical providers, you know, land and developers in our community and all of which hopefully will have planning backgrounds, economic development backgrounds, environmental backgrounds, conservation backgrounds, community advocacy backgrounds. So we are casting as wide a net possible to try to meet the expectations of the community to appoint a diverse committee.
Mayor, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. And with respect to how the board function, or how the committee functions, when we finalize the roster, I'll nominate a chair and then we would confirm that as a board. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And then we would nominate the vice chair for that effort.
Would you all repeat that again?
Mayor, you want to go ahead and just again?
Sure, sure. So the board is responsible for finalizing the roster, the REC. During that process, obviously we'll be confirming the council selections as well as the trustee slate. I would nominate the chair and vice chair that would be confirmed by the trustees.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, you go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead and just go with him.
No, I was just, I was just indicating that when we did the framework, we will have to go back and relook at the bylaws again. I thought what was going to happen is that the board would look at all of the candidates, again checking as Rudy said, for diversity of everything, background, experience, thought, those kind of things. And that you all together would specify the chair and vice chair based upon looking at the full candidacy and they wouldn't just be designees, you know, individual designees, it would be like you look at the entire pool and then decide how you get that balance. We're going to try our best to make that, to categorize all of the balance of all the candidates and you can see them. But I think it's going to be pretty hard just to designate a person without seeing all that and you all talking about it.
Sure, that's why, that's why that there is a nomination and then a confirmation. It would still require a board vote of approval.
Right in the discussion. I think Paula, to reiterate, you are correct of that process of us working collectively together.
This is John Steen. My understanding was more in line with what Paula Gell Williams was, has expressed in terms of the leadership of the committee.
I feel good. I think you're going to have a way, you know, a ton more candidates than we think. So I just, we're just excited and we want to make sure that you all get to see those. And it may take a little bit more time to look at it. And I think trustee Gonzalez is right, having another meeting to get the process down. And then, and then, you know, depending on the deadline, we'll be able to show you the whole portfolio together.
Right. I think the basis of this meeting, the meeting the community or mayor and or trustees are working towards is just getting the REC, you know, application started, right? A quick fire start, right? You know, let's initiate and let's go. And obviously, there's going to be some, you know, massaging we need to do to ensure again that this is a fair and open process as everyone wants. And then just to make sure that it gets done within the first quarter of the year. And so I do believe that we'll end up having another special session to clarify and then make sure that we're all on the same page with our community.
Trustee Gonzalez, I have a couple of other questions on this process. To the chair and the vice chair. What's the reason behind a one-year term for a chair and vice chair? You know, it seems to me if the other members are going to have two-year terms, for the sake of continuity, we would want to have the leadership also have the same term.
Okay. Does anybody have any feedback on that besides the mayor?
I will say that management just did that for flexibility as a place to start from. I think that totally works, whatever, you know, a two-year term, whatever you all want to do. We, I think we just made a placeholder to help. And to the mayor's point, probably you'll turn around and, you know, they'll be in the middle of process. So letting them go beyond the year probably makes a ton of sense.
But just to reiterate, what I understood both from the mayor and Paula is that we're going to align the same tenure for the vice chair and the chair with the REC members. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That's what I would prefer. I just think it makes more sense for continuity of the entire board if the leadership also serves for the same duration as the board members themselves, the advisory board.
Sir, I'm getting a little confused. Do you mean the board or do you mean the committee members?
I'm sorry, sorry, the committee members.
Okay, okay, yeah. I thought we were going back and forth. Yes, that makes a ton of sense.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we were all turned, so we're good with that recommendation. Any additional feedback from anyone, mayor?
No, I think you answered all my questions when you were introducing the process, other than what we just discussed.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Steen, any additional feedback or comments? Dr. Mackey? Mr. Kelly? Okay, then I guess I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Steen, Trustee Steen, to convene to executive session. Am I correct on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've concluded agenda items six, no, five, six, seven and eight. And so now we're going to go into executive session. Ms. Shelman?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board will move into closed session to pursue to provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code to consult concerning attorney-client matters under section 551.071, to discuss actions on real property under section 551.072, on prospective gifts or donations under 551.073, on personnel under 551.074, on security personnel or devices under 551.076, on economic development negotiations under 551.087, to deliberate and vote or take final action on competitive matters under section 551.086, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under section 551.089, or to deliberate under Texas Government Code section 418.183F as in frank about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act. It is 2 o'clock PM and at the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session.
So Ms. Shelman, so we're going to hang up, those of us on the board, and then call into the executive session. And then on the conclusion, at the conclusion of the executive sessions, we'll call back into the open meeting. And I think then the only item on the agenda at that point is the official adjournment.
That's correct, sir.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go into executive session.
The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. Please stand by. The open meeting will begin, will resume shortly.
The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. Please stand by, the open meeting will begin -- will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. And the open meeting will resume shortly.
Hi, it's John Steen.
Uh, trustee Gonzalez.
All right. I guess we're the first two.
This is Ron, I'm here.
Oh, good. Willis Mackey. Oh, good, all right. Ed, are you there?
Yes.
The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is returning from executive session. Please hold while we bring them back into the meeting. Trustees, our Chair Steen, looks like we have a quorum.
All right. Are we back in open session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Ms. Schellman, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I am. Would you like for me to bring the board back?
Yes, please.
Um, at this time, let's go ahead and do a roll call just to confirm that we have a quorum. Chair Steen.
Here.
I heard you. Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Mr. Kel-- Dr. Mackey, Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Nuremberg.
Here.
Mr. Steen, we have a quorum that, um, at this point, the board has concluded its closed session and is resuming the open session of the special board meeting for today. During the closed session, only matters as noticed were discussed. No other matters were taken up, no votes were taken. So, the board is ready to proceed, um, with the open session.
Thank you, Ms. Schellman. So, we move to Agenda Item 10, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, and I think that's Dr. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second, my trustee Gonzalez.
Trustee Gonzalez has seconded the motion. Um, hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.